Okay, are we up? It is Tuesday, September 6, 2022. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning to the board.
Okay, Ms. Don, do you have any minutes or reports?
Yes, I do. I have the county clerk's office 2022 fees and I have the reporter's office 2022 fees.
Okay. Commissioner Committee Liaison Report, upcoming meetings and events.
It looks like we have our breakfast Thursday morning, the ham at the Health Department. We've got a Cole County Extension meeting Thursday, and their Fall Festival is this Saturday. I think there's a Chiefs meeting Thursday night. The Lincoln University Presidential Investiture is Friday. There's an appreciation barbecue for law enforcement, military EMS, and fire and rescue at McClung Park Friday as well. It's being put on by the Board of Realtors, or the Women's Association of Realtors. I think that's about it.
Let's see, today there is a Parks Committee meeting, I believe, at noon. We're going to meet with the Chamber Exec this afternoon. On Wednesday, an old neighbor of mine is going to receive an award from the Governor, Jeff Hillkey, for his actions saving some lives and putting his life at risk some years ago, and that's it.
Yeah, I might go to that, too. Tonight, I'm presenting the Department of Defense Award to Chief Wildey in the Jeff City Fire Department. We have the Medal of Honor tomorrow, Medal of Valor, Country Ham breakfast. I've got Truman Foundation Zoom meeting at 9:00. Council for Drug-Free Youth meeting at 11:30. Chiefs, got the Realtors, John Mosley. Chamber Gala is also Friday night. Saturday, besides the Extension Fall Festival, there's Labor Parade and my wife's birthday, so I've got that on my calendar. Monday, we've got a hearing, I've got a hearing with Judge Green on a charitable trust, and then I will be meeting with St. Mary's new regional president at lunch on Monday. So that's all I've got. I don't have any commission comments. Bids and contracts, approval and signing of the agreement for the Cole County email server upgrade with Hoover and Associates. Is that Brian?
So now you're first on the list.
I, no wonder the sheriff had you held up.
Email's up. Well, good morning.
Morning.
So, on the email server upgrade, our current email server is Exchange 2013. The end-of-life is on is April of next year, so we need to go ahead and get that ball rolling as far as getting the server upgraded. Right now, we have an on-premise Exchange server, and I'm not ready to do like full cloud yet, and so I would like to go ahead and just get this, get the ball rolling on getting this thing upgraded. I did have it budgeted for this year, but it is about $10,000 more than I budgeted. $46,871 more, some $0.85.
Just going up with the cost of everything?
Yeah, we, well, we went through and we restructured the licensing before there was what was called, this is now called perpetual licensing, instead of, before, the kind of licensing we were going for was going to have to be renewed in three years, but this will not. And then also, that goes along with if we don't, you know, we need to keep the email server updated because of the security factor that it falls into and things like that, so can't really put in something out there without having the current security updates available.
Okay, so the extras have to come out of contingency, then?
We'll be able to move it through the, yes, Capitol if we need it by the end of the year.
So it might be next year's budget?
Well, we'll have to do a PO now for this. There might be available funds yet for this. There may be something that comes later this year that we may have to transfer for.
Okay, all righty.
I'm good with it as well.
Yeah.
Got the contract then, Brian? We'll just have to. I'll make a motion to sign the contract with Hoover and Associates for the Exchange Server Upgrade and Perpetual License Option.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Little stickers on there for Sam.
Approval and signing of EDA Financial Assistance Award for a multimodal transload facility development.
Put a sticky there for it.
So David Box here with the Midbo RPC. This is the, as you know, we received word from EDA last, actually, two weeks ago now that they approved the grant for the multimodal transload facility, which is monumental, task achieved. I want to thank David and his staff at Midbo RPC. They did the lion's share of this work to prepare the application and went and worked through all the requirements to get to this point, so great task achieved, and we're now to the point to sign the, David is in agreement, or basically it's an approval of the award or accepting the award?
It's really accepting, the final acceptance of the award, the official acceptance. And so I think in the documents I sent over, you get the official award letter, you get what's called the CD 450, it's federal form, financial assistance award, and then you're agreeing to accept the award and the standard conditions, you know, you follow procurement policy and pay maintenance, making regular wage, all those kind of standard things you see in an award. We have quarterly reporting, progress reports, EDA, and my annual financial report. So it doesn't come laid out on those standard conditions.
So it's a one-page document that you sign, the commission would sign, and the other items that go along with this are the conditions and requirements, quite a bit of.
Yeah, Jill needs to go over that, so.
I started it this morning, Eric.
Yes, yes.
We can approve it pending.
Eighty-four pages.
Yeah.
So we, once we get through all this process and whatnot, we will work with the RPC to come up with an agreement where they will actually manage or do the grant administrative services like we did on the South Brook Stormwater Project, similar process, where they'll, they'll handle this, these items that we're just not experienced enough to be able to handle on our own, and they will take care of that task for us. That'll be at a later date, but for now, it's just the acceptance of the.
You just want the acceptance and then the approval and signing contingent upon council's review?
Yes, that's fair.
Okay, I mean, we're good on that, Rob?
Yeah.
And do you have a document?
I have, yeah.
I'll get to it this morning, Eric, and then Sam can sign it. Do you all want to give that motion?
Yeah, that was all right with everybody else, and I'll make a motion to accept and approve the EDA Financial Assistance Award for the multimodal transload facility development.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then keep it moving, then you don't have to wait another week.
Okay, do you want to go ahead and do the?
All right.
Does that take care of everything you need on that, because you kind of had two things on this?
The other item is tied to this but separate, separate from David, so.
Hey, David, thanks for the, your work is great.
Well, we had a good team, Luke, Paul Snyder, and Messi Bottel working with us, too. It was a, it was a good team effort, and it was great, so now we can have the real work.
Yeah, and I find me $25, $30 million.
The challenge is now, because it's a tight timeframe, it's on a fast track to get this done, and we got, we got a lot of things to do, plus the FRE grant.
This part usually takes a lot longer than this typical government stuff.
We're going to try to push as fast as we can.
Yeah, we have to, to meet, to meet the conditions of the MODOT grant, so it'll, it'll go quick. It'll be a good project. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. And is the approval and signing of multimodal transload facility development agreement, is that the 80 some?
Okay, this is separate.
Oh, it's separate, okay.
Yes, this is the agreement with Capital Oil Terminals and Capital Land Investments for the development that they are doing. The project, as you know, will end in what was the old quarry there, or part of the old quarry owned by Capital Oil, or Capital Land Investments. So the agreement, where the county will be a party to, the county agrees to secure the funding for the project, which we have done, procure engineering services for the design of the facility, we've done that as well, and then bid and manage construction of the project. Capital Oil Terminals agrees to begin construction of their oil offloading terminal facility within one year, and also contribute to the cost of the project in the amount of $175,000 to be used for project development, management, and administrative costs that the county will incur. And then Capital Land Investments agrees to convey the property needed for the rail spur extension and the transload facility. Some of the extension actually is on ground that's easement that had already been secured years ago, but the terminal, the ending of the spur and where the project actually exists is on property owned by Capital Land Investments, and they'll convey that property as part of this agreement. So it's a, it's a three-party agreement. Two of the parties are capital companies. So do you have any questions about this?
This is just on the facility, it's not the running railway area, right?
Correct, yeah. When the project, actually, before the project, the project is complete, we will put out an RFQ to look at companies to actually manage the facility and ultimately the whole rail spur. That's our end goal, is to have a company manage everything. And that will, that will happen once everything gets under construction. We'll work on that.
Here's the agreement, Jeff, if you want to see it.
No, I was just clarifying that, so.
Eric, refresh my memory on the 880 Missouri Department of Transportation. That's a done deal?
It is a done deal. We're working through the process on that. We'll have an agreement to sign soon. That requires DocuSign with MODOT now, so we're working with Jill on the specifics on that, but that will come soon. That's already been awarded, and we just have to sign the agreement on that.
Have you DocuSign yet?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Blank stare.
Yeah. I haven't, yeah.
It's Monday on a Tuesday, Sam.
Yeah, I know, this is, this is weird.
So Eric, the view from 50,000 feet, this is a $3,163,000 project, a million five thanks to David Bach in RPC. Takes a million five off of that. The MODOT is $880,000 off of that, so it leaves $783,000 to fund locally between city and county.
Yes, and that portion, that will come out of the cooperative projects account money that we work with the city on, on projects. The county, over the course of the next, this year, or the next four, adds $5.25 million allotted for capital, or capital, or cooperative projects with the city. We will do an agreement with the city in which the county will contribute all of the funds going to this project, and then they'll catch up on another project later on down the road.
Right, and in, just to review, in the past, we've often had these joint where they've taken the lead, they've paid the bills, and then we settle up later. This one just reverses that.
Pretty much. Some projects, it's a 50-50. Grand Street, last year, we contributed a greater percentage because we had money still sitting in our amount, so this would kind of be the, similar to Grand Street, in which, in this case, work contributed it all, and then they'll catch up later on something, so.
Okay.
And I can't remember when we had projects where we had this much money already covered, so I think this is outstanding. I think between David and Luke and everybody, this is, this is amazing.
It really is, it really is. And not only this project, you look at the South Brooks Project, the Stormwater Project, you look at the EMS station, a lot of people working on, you know, opportunities, and we've been successful, so it's very good.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign the multimodal transload facility development agreement.
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, okay, okay. So then we will go to approval and signing of contract for Cole County Health Department Nurse Practitioner.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's time to renew our annual contract with Heather Hines, who's the nurse practitioner. She comes either two times a month or one time a month, depending on how many clients we have, and to those family planning services at the Health Department. There was no increase in her fee from last year.
Make a motion to sign the independent contractor agreement between public health and, or for the nurse practitioner at Cole County Health Department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, do we have any unfinished business? Okay. Discussion of Accounts Payable Review.
I have to confirm what accounts payable, pending review.
Motion to approve Accounts Payable Pending Review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're going to skip the ARPA, postpone it for a week, and then.
We not doing anything with it today?
No.
Well, we got some feedback from them.
Yeah.
Guess we just need to go through it and find out if we're going to do it through the revenue loss for some of it, or if we need to start sending letters out saying it's unallowable, or how we want to go about it. I know she's not on the phone, so I don't know if you had questions for her specifically, but we had 10 of them, and five of them are unallowable, so do we kick them off the list now, or would you all anticipate on this?
I would kick them off the list, yeah.
Well, I read that they're unallowable under the $5 million part. I think there's still a question of whether they are allowed under the $10 million. Fortunately, they handed it back to us to check with legal counsel on. Now, this all just happened Friday afternoon late, so nobody's had a chance to look at it since then, so that's why, and Teresa couldn't be on the call this morning. I did ask her about the sub-reception agreements and about the award letters, and I never did hear back via email from her Friday afternoon, so it's kind of, so I didn't know what direction you were going to go.
Debbie, when they say that they're just, that's just a CYA on their part. I mean, they have, they have a legal team, and they're doing, we're not the only people that are doing this, but, so they're the ones who really know what they're doing.
Well, I mean, they added that extra caveat about the definition of, you know, what that means, so to me, I think they still did put it back in our court.
Make final decision.
Yes, whether to take it to a legal group again or to go with whatever their, I don't know, it's up to you guys.
I would like to visit with Teresa about that part of it. Is it, is it something that we've done in the past in terms of, we've funded as a, historically funded? If it fits under there, then we can go, go forward with it. If it's something new and unique that we've never done before, funding, that's where the, the.
I think that's why she wanted to throw it back to us, you know, because they don't know what all we do as a county government here versus any other entity that we're contracted with. They do this differently.
Okay.
I was paying them a lot of money to answer the questions, so just, I don't want them throwing it back in our lap, and if they need to give us some definitive answers.
Well.
I think we, obviously, maybe she's available next week and have a standalone meeting, so we could spend, we could probably spend an hour on that by itself.
We could, and what I think between now and then, or during the week, is we draft some questions. If we did this in the past, does it fit under history and fits under the 10?
I did put a call into, I'm going to write when I got that email Friday, but she definitely sent it back, so that was one of the main questions. But I will put that in writing, get it sent to them. She did say that she'd have the rest of them by the end of this week, so maybe a standalone meeting next week is right on time, right on target to do something, so you guys just let me know when you want to do that, if it's after the commission meeting next Tuesday, or how you want to do that, or it still has to be on the agenda, but we can do it later.
Yeah, I'm available until about 4 o'clock Tuesday afternoon if.
I'm available, I'm available until 2:45.
So I'll see if she's available Tuesday afternoon.
Next Tuesday, so, yeah.
We'll see how, if the agenda looks up, then we can.
Yeah, we can maybe do it at 11 or something.
What we can do, we can leave and come back, too. We can go 1 to 2, because you said 2:45, right?
Right.
Wednesday afternoon, I've got some different meetings, too, but it would be, might be able to work it.
Well, let's just plan on 1 to 2, then on next Tuesday.
Okay.
Okay, I just want to keep things moving on, and some of these people are calling, they just, I'd like to have some answers, and I'm the same way, I'd like to have some answers myself. You know, if we got to start telling some of them no, then so be it, it's not fun, but at some point, you got to tell them no, Sheriff. Oh, I'm in.
Easy there, Tiger.
He was quiet back there for a second, so I had to.
Okay, nice.
We're going to move the discussion of Public Works' career path to the end. Let's see, Accounts Payable, second and final reading of Budget Adjustment Number Nine.
This is for $8,745. This does give action today, it was an insurance proceeds on Public Works.
That's right.
Do you want to approve it?
Oh, you are, this is final?
Final, yeah.
Okay. Motion to approve Budget Adjustment Number Nine, an insurance proceeds from a Public Works vehicle for $8,745.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Sheriff, purchase of new body cams.
So we, you guys know the story that we had in November, we bought some new body cams off our current vendor, Stalker, and then they told us in January or February, January, it was nice of them, that they're getting out of the body cam business, so, but they're going to support us the best they can, they've already lost a bunch of people, so we made our decision to go ahead and move forward with a different body cam system. We did a test and evaluation, we came up with the Panasonic body cams is what we're going to go with. After discussing this with Brian, and it was Brian's idea, and Brian said this is okay, we're going to, we're going to use iCloud on this, and it's actually going to make it easier, it's going to save time for my staff. Instead of burning the CDs, we'll be able to send code, so it's going to be a lot easier for my staff on this and save us your time. And it coincides with the cradle point and the hot point and the hotspot, the Wi-Fi connection, so they're going to do automatic download, so our staff won't have to sit inside their cubicle and wait for the body cams to download all the time. So the total cost is going to be $232,444, and that includes the one-time purchase of the body cams, 80 of them, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, 80 of them, and then the one-time in-car video system, because what we decided was, with the iCloud system, not only can we do that with our body cams, but we can do it with our dash cams also. So it's a one-time cost for our in-car video of $1,980, and then the maintenance agreement is $67,280 a year. So altogether, that's going to end up being $232,444. We would recommend and ask that you guys approve the transfer to go to Panasonic, so we can start the process, because it will take quite a bit of time.
Sheriff, do you, do they lock in, and, I mean, are they, what's the chances of them doing what, what the other body cam folks did, and said just got a, kind of got out or quit servicing?
Panasonic is all about public safety and the items they possess. I'm more worried about them, once we get it done, then a year from now, they're going to come back and go, hey, we got a new one now, and it's pretty, so I'm, but I'm not as concerned, but I'm not worried about them dropping out at all. That's not a concern for me at all. Panasonic's a good name, it's a good company. This is actually through Turnkey Mobile, which is a local vendor here in Jeff City, and it's off of a contract, so we don't have to collect it.
Yeah, I'm good with it, Sheriff. Talk to us about it.
It's also about three times less than the police department was budgeting for body cams, so.
I don't know, I don't know, I can't answer for them.
So the ask today is to sign the appropriation transfer, which, in a sense.
I think, I don't know if we actually need a vote from you guys to move forward, or just, if you just do the appropriation, I think we can move forward with that, since it's under contract. I don't know the answer to that.
We can, we can approve the purchase and sign the transfer.
Yeah, yeah.
We usually have a contract, but since it's a state contract.
Well, we actually do have a contract, I didn't bring it with me, but I'll bring it, I'll bring it up here afterwards, so.
Well, I'll make a motion to sign, to approve the contract and sign the appropriation transfer for the body cams as explained by Sheriff Wheeler.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Approval of EMS purchase with outdoor warning.
Morning.
Good morning.
This is an easy one. So this is a quote for the outfit of the new Tahoe that we purchased earlier this year. Anticipate seeing that sometime in November, but these warning devices, lights, sirens, center console, all that sort of stuff, has some, like a six-week lead time. So this is a complete outfit of that new Tahoe, includes the, the lighting and the warning package, it includes the center console and all the wiring for the electronics that we have. All of that will be on a lifetime guarantee. This is with a local dealer, and the Tahoe will be taken from us to Kansas City to have all of this professionally installed, so results in no increased labor on our end. So the quoted amount's $12,000, $12,619.07. That's with outdoor warning, and just ask that you approve the estimate today, and we can get a signature on it. This is in the capital budget.
Good.
Did Brian approve that?
Brian did not approve of it.
Motion to approve the EMS purchase with outdoor warning.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just as a note, since it was over $12,500, it is on.
Thank you. Okay, first reading of Budget Adjustment Number 12.
This is for $11,410. This is a Health Department, and it's on the WIC program grant, so no action today. We'll bring it back up in 10 days.
Support letter for rezoning Algoa Industrial Area.
So I heard, got word from the city late Friday that they're pulling this for now. The area was pretty large, and they had a few questions and comments, and they figured it'd be best to hold off right now, so we'll just table this till later.
Okay, we will do that. Assessors 2022, 2023 Maintenance Plan Revised. No, I'm waiting.
No, so what's, is Esther supposed to be here for this?
No, he's on vacation for the next two weeks. He, he sent it over Friday? I think Friday, and so I sent it to, to our attorney, and this was his revised, yeah, revised, and he still has it dated December 15 of 2021, so.
I can't get mine to download from the.
I think that you should use the narrative letter. The actual plan itself is not an issue, but the State Tax Commission said that he needed to redo his narrative letter that he sent the end of December, and so he has now augmented that letter with three pages of complaints about debt net.
And I asked you if we could, we could add our own letter to it.
Well, you could, you, if you want to add a comment to send to the State Tax Commission. Well, you could, if you want to add a comment to send to the State Tax Commission. But the fact of the matter is, if you haven't objected to his plan by February 1st, then Steve, it's, it's too late for the county.
He emailed that to all of us?
No.
Okay.
No, just Steve and myself, yeah.
Can you forward that later and we'll just put it on next week's agenda?
I can't.
Or do we?
I can't.
So are you saying we can't really do anything? We just have to accept the letter and if we have a, an issue, we can submit our own rebuttal or?
Well, our rebuttal was due February 1st.
So it's done come and gone, but now they're just submitting it.
Okay, so that's what he sent to them with his plan in December. And it's close to tell how he had been accomplished reassessment, but all he did was complain about staffing. Here's his revised.
Okay, so this is the one we're supposed to approve in February or rebut? And then this is a new one?
Yeah. And the only thing, the last paragraph is the only one that actually addresses doing the assessment. The rest is detailed rant about.
It's just a rant?
You know, the statute provides that on or before January 1st of each even-numbered year, the assessor shall prepare and submit a two-year assessment maintenance plan to the county governing body and the State Tax Commission for their respective approval or modification. The county governing body shall approve and forward such plan or its alternative to the plan to the State Commission by February 1st. And we're still, you know, waiting for the State Tax Commission to approve his narrative. As of this morning, talking to Jeff Schmidt at the State Tax Commission, he says that he's received a revised narrative from the assessor. But Jeff Schmidt and Dan Rowe of the State Tax Commission are going to have to take a look at that. And then they pass it on to the State Tax Commission, who next meet on September 20th. I don't think there's anything we should do today with this, except maybe acknowledge receipt of it, because there are questions inside of it. I think that they may, I think they've in the past, well, they, this time for sure, they, they questioned the narrative several times. It started out as a three-paragraph narrative, which was sent to the, to Sam in December, late December.
30th, yeah.
Under the wire, but it wasn't sent to the commission. It was sent to the presiding commissioner, not to the commission. We didn't, you and I didn't get it east and west. That was a three-paragraph narrative, and now it's about 11 paragraphs. And the most interesting paragraph to me is the last one that says, quote, "We have already conducted reviews that will see approximately 10,000 increases for 2023." I assume that means 10,000 parcels will have their increase, a letter from the assessor. So we'll see if that happens.
Kristin sent a letter to the one two years ago, rebodying.
Our, our prior auditor furnished some additional information to the State Tax Commission about the narrative. And anyway, I don't know if you've been on the loop, in the loop on this one, Mark? Okay. Today, I, I think maybe we acknowledged receipt of the most recently revised narrative, as well as the plan. But it, it has a December 15th date on it. I, I have a uncomfortable feeling about signing something on September the 6th that's got a December 15th date on. Looks like we've been sitting on it for about nine months.
I think we should file a rebuttal and we can address it February. It's.
Well, I mean, it's too late for this.
I know, I know.
You can, you can send something, but I suspect they may want him to revise his latest letter.
Yeah.
Brian, are you aware of any problems with the system? Because I used to be in the email loop. I think Kerry was too. I don't know if you.
Oh, I was too.
But I haven't seen one in ages. And so it's saying in here that there are glaring problems with the system. And I'm unaware of that. If there are, then, I mean, we just need to know so we can.
I can't, I can't, yeah, I can't really speak to the operation of the software itself and the intimate knowledge that the assessor's office has. But I can speak from a technical standpoint, and everything is running really well. So, I mean, there's two aspects of it, right? There's the, you know, is this, does the hardware have problems or things like that? And the answer is no. But I can't speak to the, the assessor's portion of it because I don't, I don't know that.
I, like Jeff, was in a loop or at least copied in on questions from the assessor's office to DevNet and answers from DevNet to the assessor's office. And they were, they were clicking along, back and forth, back and forth. And that stopped suddenly about three months ago, I think. Don't hold me to that date exactly, but I haven't seen one since.
Right.
So somehow that, we got cut off on that back and forth.
Yeah, I don't know that, I don't know you got cut off so much as, as it would indicate that the problems or the challenges that they were having with the software seemed to, to go away.
Well, according to the narrative, they're not, they haven't gone away. And he questions whether or not the vendor has, has satisfied terms of the contract, sort of alleging that they don't have the ability, when in fact, 10 other county assessors slash collectors share this, both have this, they're both on the DevNet system. So it's got, it, it works in St. Louis City. I've talked to Mr. Ardway, who was the prior county assessor here. They use it in St. Louis City, and he says it works fine there.
Larry, on your end, are you having any issues?
No. I, I mean, if we, if we have a, we never had any significant issues anymore. I mean, obviously, there was some in the beginning, but after that was all ironed out, everything worked smoothly and appropriately for us. We're getting the flow of information from the assessor's office. And the more time we pass, and now that we're on the same system, it's a lot less work, not only for our office, but for the clerk's office, because that information is flowing over all of the same format. So obviously, for the clerk and us, it's, it's reduced the double work we used to have to do, because we had to take it and convert from their system to the numbers we need in our system, reports. We have to generate separate reports.
I think most of the emails I was getting were like January, February, and it, it kind of came to a halt. So.
So this take no action.
Let's just acknowledge.
Okay.
Acknowledge.
I mean, nobody ever said the system was perfect. And I think they went above and beyond to get things implemented and to work things out. They had two people down here in Brian's office for months, working through things. And they were always available when we had any issues. So I think the system's working great.
So we will just acknowledge the receipt of his plan. I will send it over to you.
Don't they need more training on it or what?
Yeah.
I don't know. It didn't seem like the training went so well here.
Yeah.
So, did you want these back, Jill?
Um, there's one hangover.
The letters?
That's fine, Jim.
Okay. Okay. Then we will move on to the signing of engagement letter for Michael Berry.
Didn't we already do that? A week or so ago? Or is this a different one?
This, this is the actual engagement letter.
Okay.
They did send one over for that particular lawsuit. Locke was invited, but must have something else going on.
Okay, I remember.
Jill, we've been sort of dragged into this because we're Cole County in.
Yes.
Seat of State Government.
It's a lawsuit about state statutes. And they're suing the state. But then it has criminal penalties, so they sued Locke to get an injunction against criminal enforcement.
We have to bail him out?
Yeah.
How the sheriff left.
Let's go get one of the NASH cells.
I'll make a, a motion to sign the engagement letter with Michael Berry of Newman Conley in Ruth, in reference to the League of Women Voters of Missouri and ACLE versus Thompson et al., case number 22AC-CC04333.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Get all that, dog.
John, you have to go arrest the Locke.
Who?
Locke Thompson.
How about I just pick Larry? He'd be easy to arrest. He's right here. I don't walk anywhere.
I'm good with that.
Okay, we will.
I can agree with that decision.
That looks, that looks like the end of that. So we will go back to Discussion of Public Works Career Path Progression and Salary Increase Plans.
So for starters, I appreciate the opportunity just to be here. We've spent a lot of time working on this. We had a good meeting two weeks ago. We presented our plan. Felt like it was a very good plan for employee retention and recruitment. And coming back today, hopefully you've had some time to think on it, study it, talk amongst yourselves. I know we have as well, and we've made some revisions to it. I wouldn't be here today if I didn't have a staff that was worthy of making this recommendation. We got a fantastic staff. I can't say enough about them. Everybody, not just, you know, not just on the maintenance side, engineering side, office side. We got fantastic people. And our goal here today is to come up with a plan to keep them and recruit new people when we have to. So we, we've made some, some tweaks to the plan based on some conversations we had two weeks ago, adjusted some things, got it to where we feel it's very good. This is, this is the plan that we need, not necessarily what we want, it's what we need. We do know that we have employees that have standing offers to go elsewhere. That is a fact. And they're sticking around with us with the hope that we can do something to address their, their pay. We're not competitive, especially on the private side. Even some of the public side, we're not competitive. That's just happened over the course of several years. We've tried to get our starting up to where we can, get some people in the door, and we still struggle at that. We have, right now, we'll have six people driving snow plows this winter that have never been in a plow for us before. If we lose anybody, that just adds to that list. I spent last week at a conference out in Charlotte with other public works professionals. And you can imagine what the, the overall theme of, of that conference was. It's employee retention and recruitment. That is a nationwide issue, especially in our industry. We have a unique situation with us, especially in the state of Missouri, with the passage of the increase in the gas tax. There's going to be a huge push to do construction projects around the state. I know even currently, before they add these projects, currently, MoDOT struggles to get contractors to bid on jobs. Where I see that going is contractors, they're going to pay a premium dollar to get good employees to do the projects. That puts us in a vulnerable, vulnerable position. So as I said, we, we do have employees that have standing offers to go elsewhere. We got great staff. We can't afford to lose anybody, especially at this time. The plan is, is a very good plan. It's three parts. I don't need to go into too much detail. We talked about that last time. The primary goal, the primary thing that we've worked on over the past year was the Career Path Promotion Plan. And that basically sets in, in place goals for employees to get promoted up to the next level. They don't automatically get it. They have to earn it. And there are steps in which they will, they can do that, along with us, helping them along the way. The second part of the, of the salary plan is the adjustment for wage compression. And that hasn't changed. The career path hasn't changed either from the last meeting. The one thing that we did change was the starting pay adjustment. We still struggle to get people to walk in the door to even apply. We, we have, we have one opening right now due to a resignation of one of our crew supervisors. And that crew supervisor position will promote, somebody will form within. We got good employees that can be promoted up to that position. But that will leave ultimately one empty equipment operator one position. And we just happened, somebody was moving from out of, out of state. We have, they happened to apply just recently. But typically, when we send those applications or those job notices out, we get one, maybe two at best. So it, it's a struggle based on our starting pay where it's at. So we would like to adjust our starting pay up 2,000 from 32,000 to 34,000. And in doing that, to not go back to the same issue of the wage compression, we would adjust everybody's pay 2,000. So ultimately, with all, all that, everything as presented, again, I, I believe this is the plan that we need right now. We, you know, I understand there's some, some concern about waiting till we do it at the budget. I'm afraid that's taking a risk. I think we have to make, we have to take action now on this to ensure that we have the right and good and then the right staff going into the winter. And ultimately, for years to come, and we can keep these people. We got good people. We can't afford to lose anybody. I don't want to lose anybody. They're all good employees, and I like everybody that we have. The overall plan, if, if it were to be implemented today, that we're requesting, we've already fit it into our budget. Our budget is complete. We're working with Mark to finalize everything based on the outcome of today. But that would be the total increase of all departments, not just the 211, but also the 172 and 173 Parks and Planning. The total increase, including benefits, would be $266,000. And that's down considerably from what was presented at the last meeting. If it were to be implemented today, which we requested it, it would be, that's our request, the impact to this year would be less than that. If you look at the sheet there, it's, there's two parts. There's a gray, highlighted gray, and then a highlighted orange. Part of next year's budget proposal would be to promote people following the career path next year when their anniversary dates hit. There are some people that would be promoted if implemented today, based on where they're at currently today and getting promoted to the next position. And so those numbers are shown in orange. And so that total impact, Parks and Planning, everybody, would be $225,000. But that is not, that's a full year. That's a full year. That would be pro-rated down to three and a half or four months.
Is that not the one that's, that was emailed to us?
That's the one that was emailed to you.
Well, there's, one of them you couldn't open because it was protected or something.
Oh.
So that was that big spreadsheet?
Yeah, you couldn't open it, but when you did try to print it, it would print. But I, this, the latest one, I think Eric's talking about was, was on my desk here as we walked in.
That should be on, attached to the.
Oh, that's this one here.
Yeah.
The only difference is this one doesn't have names on it. The other one had everybody's name on it, and that's, that's confidential. So like I said, we got, we got fantastic, fantastic staff. I just can't say enough about how important they are to, to what we do and what we're able to do and the services that we provide. We've made a lot of strides over the past couple of years, increasing the amount of, you know, work we do on overlays, just general routine maintenance. Our snow removal is top-notch. That's always been a, a highlight of what the county does, and we want to continue to do that. Every snow route, roughly, if you break them down into miles, you got roughly about 15 miles that one snow plow driver's responsible for covering. And if we, and everybody's got their own route. So going into this winter, we'll have to have, with the new employees, we'll have to have somebody ride with them. So that, that puts pretty much everybody, including me, whether I'm in a truck riding with somebody, or I'm answering phones while Brian, or Kevin or Aaron or Matt is even doing it. So we'll, we'll all be hands-on, just to get everybody trained up. And going into the winter, it's, it's a tough time to have to hire new boys and bring people on and up to speed on things. So like I said, this is, this is extremely important to us that we act on this now. And it's just a, a risk I don't want to take of not making some decision on it going into the winter. So entertain any questions, any comments?
I'm the same place I was two weeks ago. And I don't know. I agree with you. We I agree with you, we got fantastic staff, I just think this is a budget time discussion. I do think that the entry level needs to be addressed. I think some of my concerns were the, up at the top, there's some, quite a bit of a difference between the bigger raises and the, the raises for the lower income ones, lower salaries, make a much more, bigger difference. I don't mind the plan, but I think it's something we need to look at county-wide. The thing, adjustment for 10 cents per year, we've done, I was trying to pull up my chart, but we've had colas and stuff just about every year, and a significant one last year. So, that's still where I'm at on it.
I've spent some time on it since two weeks ago, and, and I kind of broke it into three columns, one, career path, two, the, the 10 cent, and three, the starting pay adjustment. So, I'm okay with one, I'm okay with two. With three, the $2,000 number, I'd propose that we push that to January 1 and roll it into the cola. And I visited with the assess, I'm sorry, with the auditor about the cola for 23 being not just a, a percentage, it is a percentage, but there's a minimum, in other words, a $2,000 minimum. If you're, if you're making under 40,000, let's say you're making 30,000, just as, makes it easy, 2% is $1,500. Well, the cola for that person would be 2,000. So, in other words, the 2,000 column here, it's part of the cola, that's, that's where I can go along with your, your request. So, one, yes, two, yes, three, later, is what it amounts to in my approach.
And anything you all approve today, we'll work with, and we'll do our best to work with it. I think we got a, a niche, a niche in the market, in the fact that we have a lot of people that do other things on the side, and they like a good stable job, there's some flexibility, and we can work with them. So, Harry, what you're suggesting is that just be part of a cola at the end of the year, and maybe some additional adjustments specific to our department or?
No, no, well, no, that would be a cross-county thing. I mean, when you do a cola, you either do it for everybody or you do it for nobody, and you can't have a, this kind of cola for that department and another cola for something else. That's my understanding of colas or flat colas. But, you know, the state over the years has done some version of what I'm suggesting, which is, you know, back in the day when the state was barely making any kind of colas, they, they sometimes had a, a minimum of X dollars, because the folks making 100,000 got 2%, got 2,000, they, they did something for the guys at the low end, guys and gals at the low end as well, that's what I was suggesting here. So, yes, yes, and later is, is sort of my response to your one, two, three.
See, I'm, I'm good with one, the approval of the career path promotion plan, I think that's, that's good, and I think that's something we ought to look, look at, like with Health Department and things like that as well. The other, I'm, I'm with Jeff in that, you know, we're so close to, to, to the budget, this is really going to make it, I think it's going to make it really difficult.
I think if you do any of them, though, you have to forego any cola raise as well. You're talking about doing a cola as well as the mid-year adjustment. I mean, we got a lot of employees in different areas, and just, that's not going to go over very well. So, that's why I think at budget time, maybe we'd look at it, we try to make it some adjustments to the starting salaries.
The career path adjustment, that addresses the, the plan that was presented, that only affects select people that would qualify, okay? Either they're below what their minimum is on the plan, or they are eligible for promotion to the next level. The, the adjustment, the 10 cents per year adjustment, that's to address the wage compression. With the career path adjustment, we're basically promoting people up, most of them on, you know, have been here a shorter amount of time, and you're moving them up based on the plan, whereas other people got promoted or got moved around or whatever, without a, a similar increase that we're proposing now. So, I, I think the 10 cents per year needs to go along with that, or you, you run, you run into the problem of making the wage compression even more difficult. And that is probably our most serious condition right now, is the fact that we have employees that could go elsewhere making a lot more money, and the wages have been compressed because we've moved up the, the starting pay just to get people to apply, and not, you know, percentage-wise up or increased people that have been with us for a long time. I gave you the example last time, we have a 25-year employee that's making about 41,500, and we have a five-year employee making 37,500.
But that 25-year employee also has not taken the opportunity to move up, they very well could do that on their own, too, if they want to take on with another equipment. So some of it is self-inflicted, and I understand we're going to lose people, we do that in all the offices, though, unfortunately. And if we're going to do this, if we're going to do a 10 cents per year for, for you all, then we need to do it across the board, I would think, because I think everybody could argue we have compression. We had a grid in, what, a year or two ago that we tried to implement. That lasted about a month, and then it went to heck, so.
Yeah, I had asked you about that one employee as well, so.
I mean, you're, you're wanting to try to recruit people, and that's where I think if we need to address something, is the entry level, is to give them a little more there, to get them in the door, because it seems like we keep people, they like being here, they like working out there for you guys and stuff, so. And I don't, I hear that compression all the time, it's not, I just, it's not my favorite word, so.
Well, like, like I said, you know, I think one and two are critical now, not doing both of them, especially the number two, the 10 cents, we are taking a risk going into the winter, I'll just tell you that right now. And I don't want to pull any punches or anything, I'm just, that is, that is a risk and a concern that we have, and that's why we're here today, doing it now and not waiting until the end of the year, doing it at budget. I can't express how important that is to us.
Sheriff, you?
I'm just speaking as a sheriff and also as the chairman of the Chiefs Association. I've spoken with some of the other fire districts and some of the other first responders. Our concern, we, we rely heavily on Public Works during the wintertime, we also rely heavily on them during accidents, and my concern is if you, if they don't, if they don't get something, they're going to lose their experienced employees, and then that's where it's going to cause more issues for us, for responding now to different calls. So, you have a hard decision to make, I'm there with you, I, I get that. But, the compression is real, people look at that, and if you do raise your starting salary, but you don't raise anything else, all you're doing is compressing salaries closer and closer together, so.
John, our starters make 32,000, just under that. Then, then Equipment Operator Two is, they're on average 37 to 42, that's not that compressed.
Well, I think if you do.
I mean, what's your definition of compression? That because somebody's been there for 25 years, that's somebody that's only been there for five makes as much or close to what they make, but they've also chosen to take their career path and move it along by, you know, learning other equipment?
Right, and some people that will look at moving to the next step, and if they don't think it's, it's, there's enough funds in there, if it's not a big enough salary jump for them, they won't make that jump. Because, especially for supervisors, and that's, you guys were nice enough for us to our supervisors, I think, two years ago, because my deputies were making as much money as the supervisors, so we were saying, hey, you want to be a supervisor? And they're like, why would I take on that added responsibility for only $2,000 more, or how much ever it was?
I've been there, I've done that.
I know, I agree.
I mean, it's the same way at the state, too.
I, I agree.
You want to be assistant supervisor, you're getting your butt chewed on from below you, and then you're getting the crap thrown in your face from above you.
I agree. I, I see what you're saying, and I said, I, I, you guys got hard decisions, especially budget time.
So if you want to do that, then tell me that these people are going to have additional duties, and then we, we have to identify that and make that part of their job title, because just having, you know, I don't know, it's how to explain it, but we have people in there that have been there for a long time, yeah, some people are making close to what they're making. But that wasn't by our choice, that was, they've stayed as Equipment Operator Two instead of moving up to Three. It's not to a supervisor spot.
I think the Equipment Operator Three position was a fairly new position that just came along a couple, few years ago, and it was put in place to promote some of the equipment operators that were going above and beyond and operating multiple different pieces of equipment and being able to be relied on to jump in and do anything that if anybody was absent, they were able to do, so I think.
But we're also going to allow y'all to have all Equipment Operator Threes if it happens.
Well, the alternative is to have all Equipment Operator Ones.
We used to have Ones, Twos, and Threes, a limited number, and, you know, you don't really get to move up until there's an opening for it. Right now, we're opening up to where it's, that salary could be all the way up for everyone of our equipment operators, and I don't think that's a bad idea, if they can operate everything. We've made a lot of changes in the, well, the 14 years I've been up here, and we had a lot of changes in the last year from up above, and a lot of you all moved up, and we had to fill your positions, too, so that's where some of the, of the other people stepped up, and we had to fill their positions.
We have two Equipment Operator Threes, they were both here before I became director, and they were both done out of a need to promote somebody because there was the chance that they could leave. We have not promoted any, any Equipment Operator Twos to Threes because we're waiting on this plan to get approved. This plan would put in place, yes, Jeff, it would ultimately, if everybody stayed, we would have all Equipment Operator Threes, that's what we want.
Or Ones, however you want to look at it, both, argue both sides of the equation.
Yeah, we, we want to have all Equipment Operator Threes, and that would tell us that they're experienced, they can do everything we want them to, they're trained, and they meet all the qualifications and where we want people to be. In reality, that's not going to happen. We're always, some people will not want to be that. There is the requirement to have a class, a Class A CDL with tanker endorsement, they have to have the training, and they have to operate nearly all of the equipment that we have. Some people don't want to do that, they're content being Equipment Two anyways, and the evaluations they have to meet or exceed expectations. So, reality is, we're never going to have all Threes. You know, in the perfect world, we want all Threes, that's our goal. I know it goes against the grain of what some departments, or maybe even we have done in the past, had just a set number of each, but we do not want to do that, and that's what we're doing with this plan. We want everybody to work towards becoming a Three. We do have Equipment Operator Twos that when one of the crew leaders is out, actually one of our Equipment Operator Ones that we promote to a Two, basically that individual runs the crew when the crew leader's out. So, these people, they do fill in different roles. And again, I just, I can't stress enough that, you know, we, we want everybody to be trained and up to that level, and that's why we're presenting this plan. And it's, you know, it's a little bit different than maybe what it's done in the past, but, you know, we're, we're not here to do things the way we've always done it, we're making some changes, and that's, that's why we proposed this to you. And again, the 10 cents per year, the, the wage compression, whatever you want to call it, we have people doing work in positions that can make a lot more money elsewhere. We're not competitive for a person that's been here 10 to 20 years. There's jobs out there that can make a lot more money, they stay with us because they like working for the county, they're dedicated, they're loyal, and we've, we've tried to create an atmosphere that people want to stay. But at some point, and especially the way the economy's going and with inflation, people are going to leave, that is going to happen. I don't want to take that risk, and that's why I'm here today proposing this. I think it's important that we act, act now. And, and Harry, your, your plan and proposal, I think, is a reasonable one, and it's something that we can work with. I think anything less than that really puts us in jeopardy and runs the risk of us losing good people, extremely good people, that have trained and worked with us and know how to do everything we need them to do, and put, put out a good product for the county, so, that's where I'm at on it.
Yeah, in, in two months, we're into budget time, so, I, you know, it's, it's so late in the year to be done, I would still be okay with the approval of the Career Path Promotion Plan, that's about all I'm, and I'm, I'm kind of with Jeff, I think the rest of this we need to address at budget time, so.
So if we do the Career Path, we're going to do that for the other offices, too, so you'll have, you could have all Clerk Threes in an office, I mean, if they want to, they can make a Clerk Four, Clerk Five, and that's, that's keep moving everybody up then, so it, it's going to happen. I mean, we got other elected officials that are listening to the meeting, some are here, it's going to happen, so. And that, that should really be done all at one time if we're going to do that. They're in the same shape, you got people jumping ship as well, so. And I think it's important to try to, try to retain our, you know, our good employees, but it's just a budget time discussion. The, the one thing that we had at the sheriff's office was, we had so many openings in the jail, and that really needed to be addressed at that time. If you said you had five openings right now, I think it would hold a lot more water. Can it happen tomorrow? If it does happen tomorrow, then I think we're having this meeting again with a whole different attitude.
I, I don't want to be reactive to this, we need to be proactive, that's all I can say. And I, I know you guys are in a tough position, we're in a tough, tough position, too, if, if we lose people.
Well, and you're, you're fighting for your people, and you should be, and so will everybody else, so.
That's what we're, that's our job, Jeff.
I don't disagree with you, and I don't, I'm not saying the plan is a bad plan, I think it's something that we can look at at budget time county-wide, so. Oh, you all have a couple of different proposals you're looking at, I don't know if you want to find out.
I'm, I'm going to make a, a motion, see if we get a second. I had a motion to adopt the Career Path Adjustment, adopt the 10 Cent Per Year Adjustment effective next pay period. If I was a ventriloquist, I'd second it.
Yeah. So I would, I would make a motion to adopt the appro, the Career Path Promotion Plan.
So are we going to, are they going to get a cola at the end of the year then, or will they forego that because they got their Career Path Adjustment, just for clarification?
We, we can't exclude people from the cola, because if we exclude one group of folks from the cola, we exclude them all.
I think we've done it before.
I think on EMS.
EMS is, is, is different, they, they have a schedule, it's already a schedule that's baked in their compensation.
They're still county employees, so I mean, if we're going to include them, then, or not include them, then it should be the same across the board, so.
Did you not exclude the Sheriff's Department with their mid-year increases from the cola for one?
So, when I talked to the sheriff, that was, he, I'm pretty sure he said that they would forego them if they could do it in the middle of the year, because that was one of my hangups with him.
I think the call again is going to be something we're going to have to look at, but right now, we just need to either, you know, I made a motion, Harry seconded, and another discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just will say, in, in closing, I appreciate that you've considered this, it's a big deal for us. I'm disappointed that you all did not approve the, the 10 cents per year, that was as critical, I think, as the Career Path Adjustment, and, you know, I'm just concerned that we're going to lose people still. The Career Path definitely helps, it gives people, especially younger people, coming in the door knowing where to go. It also addresses employees that have been with us for a while doing jobs or in positions that have qualified to move up. So, we do, we do help some, unfortunately, we're not helping all, but it is, it is a, you know, definitely good for us going forward. And I don't know if there's any opportunity to bring the 10 cents up again, or is that something that has to happen at the end of the year with budget? But I still think that's critical that we do that, and I'm, I'm not going to, I just, I can't, I still, I, I don't want to say, I'm not sure how to put this, but it's important that we address people that have been with us for a long time, and their wages are comparable to what they should be paid, and so I think we still need to be considering that.
I, I would see, I would suggest, I would, I'd make the motion every commission meeting between now and first of the year, if, if I knew I'd get a second, or if you told me I was getting a second. With these crazy, I shouldn't use the term crazy, with the current sunshine law, if I go in and talk to one of these guys about, come on- With the current sunshine law, if I go in and talk to one of these guys about, come on, let's do this. Well, we've got a warrant. We've got to invite Jeff to the, the press, to that, that meeting. So it's very difficult for us to commensurate, get together. So I can say it here in open session, where the world is here, listening and watching. If I had a second on something, well, even if I don't, I might make that motion.
Well, you can fit on the agenda. Just ride under the ARPA.
I'll come up every week.
As I told you before, I'm very impressed with, with the plan you put together. I just, we're so close to the budget, it's just, um.
As I said at the very beginning, this is in our budget. Actually approving everything as it stands, we put that into our budget, and it's balanced into next year. So, we, we're, I would say, very conservative in how we budget, especially with the contingency, and we're staying that way. And we're making this work in our budget if you were to approve everything. Understand the issues. We're close to budget. We're in budget right now. We're, we've submitted our budget preliminarily to, to, to the auditor. So it's, it doesn't get approved until the end of the year, but we're in budget right now. So I think this really, in my mind, needs to be an ongoing discussion going into the budget year, and perhaps we propose this through the budget for y'all to approve at that time. Maybe that's a workable, Sam, do you think that's workable?
Yeah.
David, do you have the information from when we did the last adjustment, salary adjustments for Public Works? And this has probably been four or five years ago. I just want to revisit that. I don't know if I can find that email.
I can probably, I can look for some of that, too.
That was B E before Eric.
Yeah, that was Larry.
I just want to go back and revisit some of that, too. I don't remember exactly how those adjustments affected it, but we did, we did do some with that. And like I said, I think the starting entry level stuff is one of the ones that we need to, we do got to get people, get their foot in the door, and we've been lucky to keep people, so once we get them in there, if we keep them for a while, we did that with the EMS service. What theirs, we front-loaded it a little bit, to try to get them here and keep them, and get them there for three years, and they don't tend to go anywhere, so.
See, I'm not saying no, I think add it, add it to your budget. I just think that's a.
So, again, I appreciate it. I want to tell you all three that I appreciate just hearing us out and listening to what we have to present. I know it's not exactly what we wanted, but it, it is some, and we just need to keep working. And we'll work with our staff and, you know, keep on, you know, working with them to, to keep them engaged and, you know, content with things. Like I said, we, we do run the risk with people, even. And since we didn't get, you know, even two-thirds of what we were presented today, I think that risk is there. I'll just tell you that straight up, so. We'll just have to wait and see, but we'll do our best to, to retain everybody that we can, and we can't afford to. Getting people indoors is great, okay? That's a struggle we have. Losing people's worse. Especially people that have been with us for a long time, and they're trained and talented in what they do. So that's my concern right now.
Yeah, I hope y'all had a lot of changes, too, and, you know, some people don't like change, and, you know. I think we've got one that left. He just didn't care for the change as much, and you know who I'm talking about. Talked to him, and it might have been good for everybody, you know? Maybe he needed that push to go on to other things. Did we like losing him? No. Is he going to be hard to replace? Hell, yeah. But, you know, at the end of the day, things like that are not happening. It happens in the real world, and it's going to happen here, so. Yep, alrighty, well.
I appreciate the conversation and consideration and.
We'll reconsider during budget time. I think you got a, a good plan here, but I think we need to look at it county-wide, too, and for all of our employees, so.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Okay. Our next scheduled meeting is September thirteenth at nine AM. Would entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Got to find my notes. Motion to go into closed session pursuant to six ten point zero-two-one of the revised statutes of Missouri. The commission will go into closed session to discuss the following: computer operations under section six ten point zero-two-one subsection twenty-one.
Second.
Roll call.
Sam?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.